Or do we not have any signups up here? But here, it's not sign up, it's just anybody here. We'll see.
Yeah. Right. Is anybody heard from this guy?
He just texted, he said he's at Four Corners, he's running late.
Okay.
He said he'll be here in just a few minutes.
Gotcha.
Good evening. It is six o'clock on Monday, December 13th. I call this meeting of the Clear Creek Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that its notice has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. And we will move into the public hearing, review single member district election boundaries. Hello, Mr. McClarty.
Hello. So every 10 years, we have a census taken in the United States. And based on that census, we are required, all entities are required to redraw their boundaries if there's a difference between the highest population and the lowest population district of more than 10 percent. So what you'll see tonight is what we did and, all right. So first of all, I'd like to say that the census shows a large gain in population as we can attest by the traffic around here, right? So we grew by more than 37,000 people over the last 10 years, from 210,563 up to 247,725. And the population growth was unequal across our districts. So some districts received a lot more in the terms of population, and you can see that on that graph on the side, on that table. District one grew by 12,000, two by 7,000, district three by about 1,400, four by 4,300, and five by 11,800. So that's not surprising. We've seen the growth here in League City and across our district. The current variance between the district with the largest or the highest population and the lowest is 19.8 percent, which is well above the 10 percent. So that tells us we have to go out and redraw the lines to get it as equal as possible across the district. So federal and state laws require school districts to equalize population within districts, between districts, to within 10 percent. This is our current, just as a reminder, this is our current election boundaries, districts one, two, three, four, five. And they're color-coded, so they're very easy to follow. We've had these since 2011, and I was here in 2011 and helped draw those lines at that point in time, too. So this, I don't know if I'll be here in 2031 to draw them again. So you'll have to find somebody else. Wanted to kind of walk through the process a little bit so that everybody in the audience here, as well as the board, is reminded of what we went through. So district staff utilized redistricting software from our longtime demographic consultant, Templeton Demographics. They've been with us about, almost as long as I've been here, probably 15 years or more. And then we use their software to help draw single member district maps for review by the board. They have census blocks in there so we can move lines around and see what the implication is on a specific district. And then the board of trustees were provided with five options showing new single member district election boundaries. These were provided on November 5th, November 19th, and December 3rd in our Friday Packet format. And just to note that the 14th and 15th amendments of the U.S. Constitution and Texas Education Code require the district to revise the boundaries of its single member district, trustee districts, to make them as nearly as practicable of equal population if, based on the current decennial census data, the total population residing in Clear Creek ISD's most populous single member district exceeds the total population residing in its least populous single member district by deviation of 10 percent or more. So that's just the legal language that we have to follow. And each one of the draft plans was within that 10 percent. So they were all acceptable as far as the population. On December 6th, the board met in a workshop session, an open session, to discuss all five of the draft plans. And the board quickly came to a consensus that Draft Plan E, which closely aligns to our current high school boundaries, was the best plan, and asked staff to post all five plans, along with the board's preferred plan, on the district website. And these were posted on December 7th of last week. I just wanted to remind everybody, this is what our high school boundaries look like. So my goal in Plan E was to try to get our election districts as closely as possible to those boundaries. And I got pretty close. It's not exact, of course, but this is Draft Plan E, so this is the consensus plan, and it looks very similar if you go back here, and I'll show you a better picture in a minute. If you go back to the high school boundaries, and then you look at the Draft Plan E, they're very close. There are some differences, but they're close. This plan right here, this shows Exhibit A, which is Draft Plan E, but what we did was we overlaid the high school boundaries on top of the draft election districts that we've drawn. And you'll see in the dark lines, the dark black lines are the high school boundaries. So in some places, it's very, very close, I mean extremely close. And in others, we had to make a little shift in our election districts in order to keep the population variances within 10 percent. As you'll see, down in League City, District Five was, has to go over into the Clear Creek High School District, just because of we need the number of population in there, it just wouldn't work out without doing that. So, but I think we came pretty close to the high school boundaries, and I think the board was pleased that we could get that close. I was frankly amazed because when I was thinking about, you know, what's a good plan, and I never thought it would work like this, but it really worked out very well. This is just the census data for Draft Exhibit A, which is the one that we'll be looking at later tonight. You'll see over the far right, 9.1 percent variance, so the variance is within the 10 percent. And you'll see across the line, the total population, you'll see 49,900 on District One, 49,300 District Two, 49,561 District Three, so those are all very close. District Four's a little larger, 51,617. And then District Five, which includes the west side of League City, which is really growing rapidly, is a little bit less. It's 47,331, but that, we expect that to grow quickly over the next several years to where it'll be balanced out even better as we go further into the next decade. So this is the recommended single member district maps. That's the Exhibit A that we've been talking about all along. And so the recommendation later in this board meeting, we have a resolution that the board will approve if they agree with this, with Exhibit A as being the election districts, and it will take effect immediately upon approval. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. I'll just leave that one up on the board, that kind of shows what we're looking at.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. McClarty. I'll open up any comment to the public, and I'll ask the board to hold your questions or comments till, you know, after consent agenda, and then it's re-presented. So if there's any comment... Hearing no comments.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. McClarty. And we will move into a brief recess where the board will reconvene at 6:45. So I'll call us into recess at 6:08.
I don't know.
We got Jonathan and Michelle.
Okay.
You didn't get your seasonal haircut?
No. Not in photo op condition.
You don't want to have a last minute.
Okay, understood. Okay. All but three.
And I call us back into open session at 6:44 PM. We will move to pledge of allegiance and Texas pledge.
Yes, this evening we are pleased to have the Clearbrook High School drum majors as our pledge leaders. So if Jacob Garcia, Haley Sanford, and Samantha Yardley can meet me down from the dais to lead the pledge, that'd be great.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas law, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing for a moment's silence.
Thank you. So this evening, we are going to begin with some holiday cheer. Every year, we ask our students to consider creating artwork for the district holiday cards. And we send these cards to hundreds of people across the district, across Texas, and across the nation. Selecting the 12 winners was really hard work. I had the opportunity to visit with the following artists and enjoyed listening to them about how their art teachers have inspired them to pursue their passions. And so I'd like to ask the following students to come forward. And a few individuals, I'll mention their names even though they were not able to join us. And if you all can hold your applause until the end, and once we have all the honorees up here, we can have a thunderous round of applause for our artists. So Annie Tran from Clearbrook High School with Playing Pretend. And actually seeing the artwork up here, let's go ahead and recognize each student. This is awesome. And you can see when you look at this artwork how hard, I mean, this is exemplary work. Kennedy Pugh from Clear Springs High School with White Christmas. She's not able to be here this evening, but also deserves our recognition. Bailey Folds from Clear Falls High School with By the Firelight. Hannah Jalon from Clear Falls High School with North Pole Express. And Brooke Barnum from League City Intermediate with Land of Sweets. Bushra Paratcha from Brookside Intermediate with Let It Snow. Tyler Nix from Brookside Intermediate with Happy Holidays. Sweet Night by Rebecca Wang from Westbrook Intermediate. Hot Chocolate by June Brown from Weber Elementary. Christmas Eve by Eliza File from McWherter Elementary. Sofia Rodriguez from Whitcomb Elementary with Snowy the Snowman. And from the Clear Creek ISD Virtual Learning Program, we have Berea Khan with I Love Snow So Much. And I enjoyed chatting with you all and hearing about how your teachers inspired you. But one of the things we talked about is what about this particular card? And if one of you can volunteer to share a little bit about what inspired you for this particular work of art?
Of course. Okay, so for my piece, Playing Pretend, what really inspired me was I wanted to go against doing regular realism. I wanted to add some charm to my piece. So I decided to explore and go into more of like a Disney cartoon style, which I believe would be a lot friendlier and bring a lot more cheer to people during the holidays.
And again, please join me in another round of applause for our wonderful artists. We're getting ready to take a picture, but also if there are art teachers of these students here this evening, please join us as well. And let's please join me in recognizing them. Oh, I have a special request from our board president. And your name's Eliza, is that correct? Remind me what your name is. Sofia, Sofia, if you can please tell us, what was the hardest part about creating your card?
Was that I tried to put a lot of detail in it, but it didn't really turn out as well as I thought it would.
I think it turned out great. It was wonderful detail. So our visual and performing arts are certainly in the spotlight tonight. And I am thrilled to congratulate the Clearbrook High School Marching Band for qualifying and competing in the state UIL marching band competition on November 9th. We have the drum majors, as you know, with us tonight, and the entire ensemble with us virtually in the band hall at Brook. So if our drum majors can come forward again, that would be fantastic. Jacob Garcia, Haley Sanford, and Samantha Yardley. And we also appreciate Dr. Sharon Lopez being here this evening. And also, we appreciate your leadership of the program. And I want to give a shout out to the entire group of band directors. So Brad Hughes, but also Dusty Norris, Robert Beavers, and Fernandez Rodriguez. The band really had an amazing season. I know I had the opportunity to see you all perform more than half a dozen times. So incredibly impressed. The show's title was The King, but I was impressed with the difficulty of the music, all the details and the way everything was carefully designed to tell a real story. And that was incredibly impressed. So Mr. Hughes, one thing I've heard about is the culture that you have built within the program. Can you please tell us about how you've helped foster a culture that contributes to the success of the program?
Absolutely, thank you. Well, it starts first and foremost with finding and building great leaders. And we see three of them here tonight, and I know a number of them are back at Clearbrook High School. They do a tremendous job of modeling the behaviors and the expectations that we want all of our students to have. And we couldn't have asked for a better set of drum majors this year to help lead the charge with our show, The King. And they're not done yet. All three of them, on a side note, made area for their region band path and are going to be competing for one of those state spots here in a few weeks, so.
And Jacob, Haley, and Samantha, I'd ask any of you all to share, what is something that didn't go as anticipated during one of the key shows in competition? And how did you all deal with it?
We had a competition, BOA Houston, that was really, really important to all of us. In 2019, we actually made finals at the competition. This year, unfortunately, we didn't. And it was really scary as a band program because we had a goal of making state. And so we decided as a leadership team to all have a meeting and come up with what we could do to help better our sections, help better the band, and build better relationships with everyone so that we could accomplish our goal of state. And I'm glad to say that we obviously did. It was a low moment for the band at the time, but we grew from it. And I think the band program learned from that, that no setback can stop us from accomplishing our goals and our dreams.
Congratulations to you all on an amazing year, truly inspiring, well done. So I'd like to ask Sheri White, art teacher at League City Intermediate, to come forward. Congratulations, Ms. White.
Thank you.
She has been named as a Texas Art Education Association Distinguished Fellow. There are over 4,000 art educator members in the TAEA Professional Association. And since 1993, there have only been 79 distinguished fellows appointed. And we have a special video which will clearly demonstrate why Ms. White is very deserving. So check out this Legacy Leader video.
The light is bright in Sheri White's art class, and the space is a safe one.
Art gives students a voice when they have none. So it allows them to speak, to communicate, and to tell their story when sometimes they can't find the words.
For the students in Mrs. White's class at League City Intermediate, creating art isn't just about putting pen to paper. It helps them figure out who they are.
You kind of show people what's on your minds, and you can tell a lot about someone's character from the arts.
For 27 years, Sheri White has been helping sculpt artists' character in Clear Creek ISD. In fact, she was one of the first to pilot an art program to begin elementary art education in the district.
The school actually had to give up a teaching unit, so the school had to be on board, the teachers and everybody, to bring us in. And so we didn't really have facilities at first. And now, you know, every school has an art teacher. We have state-of-the-art facilities, and it's just grown. It's impressive how we, as a district, have become such a leader in art education.
Starting at Armin Bayou in 1994, Sheri has helped curate the art program from one elementary teacher to the appointment of an art teacher on each of the 27 campuses.
It was magic. From the minute she walked into the room, I knew and she knew that she was the right person for that job. She is masterful.
Dr. Tina Farrell helped launch Sheri's career in CCISD. She's now the Chair of the Distinguished Fellows of the Texas Art Education Association, an organization designed to help move the next generation of art educators forward. Last month, White was inducted as a Distinguished Fellow of the TAEA after a nomination.
She has worked on VICE. She's been a regional director for the Visual Arts Class event herself. She was our media director for a long time. She did our electronic media process. She completely got our scoring online. She has helped this state so much. She's a leader. She was a leader the moment she walked in here in 1992, and she's a greater leader today than she was even then.
Being inducted into a group of individuals who formed art education in Texas is a high honor. One Sheri doesn't take lightly.
Individuals that helped me become who I am and helped give me my voice are the ones that nominated me. So it meant a lot to be part of that and to be part of those leaders and my heroes is very special.
But for Sheri, it all comes back to the kids.
Art is the visual history of mankind in the world. So it's very important that we continue that and we continue documenting and allowing kids to create, make marks, and make an impact.
Art is kind of like a family. There's no judgments, and everyone's really close. Art helps kids find a part of themselves that they wouldn't have found without art.
When a student looks back in middle school and they think about art, I really hope they feel successful. I hope that they felt art was the best thing that happened every day, and they felt loved. I want them to have that memory. I want them to leave here feeling, you know what, I'm something special.
I hope everybody realizes what an incredibly special human being this woman is. She is phenomenal, and gifted, and precious, and loving, and just an amazing teacher. I wish everyone could be in her classroom for a day just to watch her work with children. She helps them to find their self. She helps them to believe in their self and to make beautiful things happen. And I could not be more honored to have her as a part of the Distinguished Fellows.
Tina Farrell's here, we'd love to have her join. She's former Clear Creek ISD Assistant Superintendent. She nominated. Okay, well, thank you. Please join the photograph, okay?
The Texas Art Education Association, we welcome to the Distinguished Fellows.
So we're going to close out recognition this evening with a true hero, Galveston County School Liaison Deputy Felipe Belmaras. And if you can come forward, please. So Friday, November 12th, started like a normal day for Deputy Belmaras. He's often seen outside welcoming students to school and waving to parents, walking the halls, and monitoring students during lunch. On November 12th, he observed a sixth grade student in distress during lunch. Unfortunately, the student was choking, but Deputy Belmaras quickly administered the Heimlich maneuver and literally saved the child's life. His heroic actions were recognized by the Galveston County Sheriff's Department, and I'm glad we have the opportunity to thank him for his service tonight. And with us tonight is Logan Dilger, the student who helped along with his family. And Logan, will you please come forward for a photograph? And Captain Rivas, will you join us as well? Absolutely, I just learned that the sheriff is here, and if you can come forward as well. That's awesome. That's awesome.
I too would like to thank this outstanding officer, and they do day after day to these school districts and these children. Congratulations. And I would be amiss if I don't recognize one of his supervisors in the back in the pink if he'd stand up. Just days later, he had to do the same thing to a five-year-old?
Wow.
Four-year-old, just days later. So outstanding job to both of y'all, and congratulations.
there."
All right. And I wanted to welcome our guests. And once again, for those that were here, hopefully to see our heroes in the hallway and also our students that were recognized. I'd be remiss if, my favorite one was little Sophia, so that's why I asked if you would have her speak, and she did a great job. So next, I'll turn it over to Dr. Williams for our district update.
Yeah, so we, obviously, we've just concluded recognizing several individual employees. And I want to start my update this evening with a reference of a recognition that is really a reflection of all CCISD team members. And that's that Clear Creek ISD has been named a top workplace in Houston by the Houston Chronicle. This award has a lot of value to me because it's based on employee surveys. Of the more than 2,700 businesses considered, Clear Creek was among the top 175 selected. And I really think it speaks volumes to the level of teamwork in our schools and our support facilities throughout the district. We continue to monitor COVID-19 numbers. We're operating in stage two, which means that there are no restrictions in place. And at this point, unless conditions change, we'll be welcoming elementary parents to have lunch with their students beginning January 10th. And we'll be sharing some reminders with families as well as an online signup process so that we can prepare space for parents. And we're looking forward to that occurring near the start of the new semester, January 10th. We are also thrilled with attendance at school events. And I know in terms of the events that I've been to recently, and I've been to basketball games, volleyball games, robotics competitions, and school plays recently, all of these events have had great parent participation. And we've seen high participation in terms of other events, like pre-K Parent Information Night and band and chorus concerts. And let me tell you, we've had some amazing band and chorus performances. I've seen more than a dozen band and chorus holiday performances in the last couple of weeks, and we clearly have talented students and teachers. And we've had great student participation in community events as well. For example, I recently joined the ROTC cadets, cheerleaders, marching bands, and dance teams in participating in the League City Holiday Parade. And I may be biased, but I certainly think that they stole the show in terms of the parade. And so really, the bottom line is that I want to thank parents and students for their active participation in school and community activities. On a more somber note, I would like to take a moment to thank the Clearbrook High School community of staff, students, and parents, as well as district-level staff members who supported the Brook community. Earlier this month, the school was evacuated due to a bomb threat, and the event lasted several hours. We are very appreciative of the incredible response from area agencies who provided support, bomb-sniffing dogs, and extra support the following days. We will always err on the side of caution when it comes to student and staff safety. And for those who missed our school board workshop last year, last week, I should say, we updated the board on key priorities for Clear Creek ISD. Specifically, we heard from teachers at Clear Springs High School who talk about the value of working with other teachers in terms of teachers by department or course in professional learning communities. They described how teaching and learning is improved because teachers collaborate to share ideas on instruction, divide up work like creating assignments or creating review materials, and also to identify and address likely skills and concepts with which students might struggle so that they can collaboratively address those areas. They expressed support for school and district-level colleagues to assist with their focus on improving teaching learning through professional learning communities. I was truly in awe of their passion for working together and how they're empowered to use data in real time to pivot in lesson planning based on what students need at the moment instead of just waiting for a test down the road to inform that planning. And I'm excited about this work and its impact on student learning, recognizing that each school is at a different place along this journey. So that was the most recent board workshop. And at the workshop before that, the board heard from teachers regarding efforts district-wide to implement a greater emphasis on phonics and phonological awareness as part of reading instruction. There's a statewide emphasis on reading academies for teachers, and our teachers have made it clear that CCISD is a leader statewide in applying the science of teaching reading. And this is another great example of the focus of CCISD generally and our teachers specifically on providing our students an outstanding education. This should be and is our focus. Now, looking ahead to the new year, students at Clearview High School will return from the holidays with a gift of a new school. We're excited to open the new Clearview High School in 2022. And the first board workshop in January will include an update on our work in developing a three-to-five-year financial plan with options for expenditure reductions. Given the projected decline in state revenue in coming years, this is important work of which we can be proud. Our community can also be proud of the budget that we developed and adopted for the current school year. It's a budget that works to meet the needs of our students while reflecting good stewardship of taxpayer dollars. The budget does not count on accessing reserve funds. Those funds would be accessed only if absolutely necessary. And recognizing the financial challenges that lie ahead, we increased the operating budget by only 0.2%, so not 2%, but 2/10 of 1%. The budget appropriately reflects a focus on instructional services with only 2% allocated to district-level administration. Our budget priorities included having competitive salaries, stipends, and benefits for all employees in order to attract and retain the team needed to provide our students an outstanding education. I'll also share that we appropriately shifted dozens of teachers and other staffing from some campuses to others based on need, thereby avoiding creating additional positions in the budget. So our discussions with the board regarding the multi-year financial plan will continue at the January workshop with the board. The new year will also ring in a new chapter for Dr. Karen Engel, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education. She's retiring from Clear Creek ISD after 20 years of service, and we had the opportunity to reflect on her legacy. And I'd like to, I'd like to ask you to join me in watching this video. It's about four and a half minutes long. And Dr. Engel, once the video concludes, if you can stand at the end of that video so we can recognize you.
I consider it a calling, and of the highest calling, in my opinion.
Dr. Karen Engel is no stranger to Clear Creek ISD. In fact, she spent most of her life within the district. As a student herself, she was part of the very first class at Clear Lake City Elementary and later graduating from Clear Lake High School. But her connection to those schools doesn't stop there.
I had the privilege of going back to Clear Lake City Elementary and being the principal and just connecting back with that community. And so it's just a family feel for me. It always has been as a child and then also as the principal.
On top of going back to her roots at Clear Lake City Elementary, she started her educator career with CCISD at Landalt Elementary.
The slogan at Landalt is "Landalt launches leaders," and it truly did launch my leadership career. And in all honesty, I learned so much from everybody there.
Launching her to new heights at Clear Lake Intermediate, Clearview High School, and even being part of the team that opened Clear Falls High School in the CCISD Education Village.
When I graduated from high school, we had two high schools, and now we have five comprehensive high schools and plus an early college high school and then Clearview. So all of that's been added.
She's seen the district through many changes. But Dr. Engel finally returned to her alma mater of Clear Lake High School as principal in 2014 to help with the rebuild of the campus.
That was probably one of the greatest challenges in that they demolished the building and rebuilt it while we were in it, on the same ground. It was sad to see it, but oh my gosh, it's magnificent now.
Through all of her moves in CCISD, colleagues say Dr. Engel was a leader from the start.
She stood out as just a uniquely focused, driven person in believing in the good of this school district and the students here. Based on her experiences as a student in Clear Creek ISD and growing up here, she's so invested in that for all children.
Holly Hughes was there on the day Dr. Engel interviewed for a position within CCISD. She says part of what makes Dr. Engel stand out is her commitment to building student voices and investing in people.
It is amazing to see how she can come into a place and build community and build unity and develop deep values. She truly is a gifted leader in that way. To have all those components and to be relentless energy dedicated to the cause, to remove barriers, to invest in that, and to invest in the community for the greater good, it's a unique talent that she has and a unique gift, for sure.
For the last three years, Dr. Engel has served as the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, using her skills to help mold younger educators and elevate student success.
You just get to put all of this expertise together to support students' passions. It's all about making, providing opportunities for students to follow their passions and really excel at that and find the direction for their lives.
She celebrates those that are around her. She celebrates student success at every step, at every turn. She's going to look at any possible path with that lens, and that's been a huge part of her success, and that's going to be something we're all going to miss.
After more than 20 years with CCISD, Dr. Engel is retiring in December. But her legacy at Clear Creek extends far beyond the four walls of any school.
The legacy would just be, it would be in the students, it would be in the teachers, it would be in the people that I've worked with. We've provided opportunities for everybody along the way to reach their potential, to excel, to be better themselves.
Her legacy is one of vision, of commitment, and of service and empowerment to those that are around her.
Dr. Engel, please. No better note than to end, to conclude the district update with our recognition of Dr. Engel. Thank you.
Fantastic, fantastic. And thank you for that update, and thank you, Dr. Engel, for your years of service. We will move on to community input. The purpose of community input is for the entire board to receive feedback from citizens. The board will hear the public comments but will not respond. Matters brought forth that require a response will be addressed by the superintendent as appropriate. All information received is subject to verification. Community input is scheduled for 30 minutes and has two forums. Those requesting to address the board in advance of the meeting are granted three minutes to address their topics, and those who sign up this evening prior to 6:30 are granted one minute. So we have 15 speakers and, 15 three-minute speakers and three one-minute speakers, 18, I'm sorry, 18 three-minute speakers and one, or three?
15 three-minute.
15 three-minute and three one-minute. Right. In a district our size, though, there will certainly be issues or topics which will understandably generate considerable interest from the public. It is important that members of our community be able to address the school board respectfully without disruption and without fear of intimidation from other attendees. On behalf of the board, the superintendent and CCISD staff, we welcome your input during our school board meetings. We request that everyone exhibit the respect and the understanding each person rightfully deserves when addressing the school board during the public import portion of the meeting. And starting us off, we have John Kuberuvius, Candace Smith, and Janine Reed.
Thank you. My name's John Kuberuvius, and those of you who know me, I'm a very partisan person. But I know better than to bring politics into school or into this board. My kids have had an excellent education in CCISD. My daughter's currently working for Travis County District Attorney's Office. My son graduated from college and is now serving in the Navy. So I appreciate what you have done on this board. And I want you to know that my kids have learned quite a bit from here, and again, I appreciate it. You know, when my kids attended school, they, all we wanted was for them to have a good education, a really good social experience, and really, that's all that we asked for. Today is a little bit more complicated. Parents want their kids, the parents want their kids to come home with a good education. They want them to come home not sick with a disease that might kill their grandparents. And they want them to come home, you know, not stuck in a school or in a morgue. They want them to come home. It is difficult, and I know your job is difficult. So the board must continue to base their decisions on math, science, common sense... So the board must continue to base their decisions on math, science, common sense, and good accounting principles, and I urge you to continue doing that. Over the last few months, I've been really embarrassed, and this is the reason I came down here today. I've been embarrassed to hear some of the people speak here. And it is just flat-out embarrassing. I don't know what other word I could use. The kids you are responsible for seem to have more respect and dignity than for those who have come and spoken here in the past, and that is pretty doggone sad. We live in a community that believed and relied on science and on math and facts. We put a man on the moon and brought him back. That's what we did. And now, we are in a community that is adhering to conspiracy theories, far-out idiotic comments. They're talking about election fraud based upon nonsense, and it's quite embarrassing. So I did come here to tell you, mainly to tell you that I greatly appreciate what you're doing. I greatly appreciate what CCISD has done for my family, and for my neighbors who are teachers, and for my adopted grandkids, their kids, because they're all in school and they're doing just fantastic. So thank you very much, and keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Next, Candace Smith, followed by Janine Reed, followed by Ms. Connie Rattisso.
Okay, so there have been 1,300 school shootings since 1970. Eighteen percent of those occurred after Sandy Hook, and one tragically happened right down the road from us. This year alone, there's been 29. It's no longer a matter of if, but when, which makes me concerned. Two weeks ago, a student shot and killed four of his classmates while at Oxford High School. I think we all know that by now. In a viral video, you'll see he went to the door of a classroom and tried to force his way in, claiming to be a sheriff, but he couldn't get in. And the parents of Oxford High students attribute and thanked a company named Nightlock Door Services, who makes special door barricades for saving their children's lives and preventing them from entering. Without it, the death count would have been higher than four. A regular door handle lock is not impenetrable. Neither are the doors that were installed in CCISD shortly after the Santa Fe shooting. I am grateful for what was done after the Santa Fe shooting, and how y'all addressed our concerns, and all of the efforts y'all put forth. I do believe more can be done. The picture that y'all see, y'all may not understand it, but it is a mounted plate of a superior strength metal, and it's anchored to the floor and the door. And employees simply slip the lock into the mechanism, and it becomes a barrier that can withstand up to 2,000 pounds of force, which could prevent an intruder from using alternative ways to break through, such as a gun, or even a stolen key, because the shooter can absolutely destroy a regular lock, but not the light lock. It will remain. That will hold. I realize this costs money, but Nightlock does have payment plans, and they do work with schools. They also help with installation. If you find it to be too expensive, there are other similar products available. I think it's worth the money. We don't want to look back and think if only we had done more. Sometimes I drop my child off, and I get this feeling in my gut, and I wonder like, will today be the day? Is today the last time I see her alive? And I think other parents kind of get that feeling sometimes, too. And then I think about my best friend, who is a teacher, and if a shooter entered her classroom, I know what she would do. She would die protecting them, just like every other teacher in CCISD. So we've lost enough people this year, and until we can prevent shootings, we just need to defend against them and protect the tiny little humans that we love so much. And I think this product will help, and that's it. So, thanks. Bye.
Thank you. And next, Ms. Reed. Thank you, Ms. Reed, Ms. Rattisso, followed next by Mr. Josh Foxworth.
I know there are some people here that are, as they say, ready to watch the show of who they call conspiracy theorists, fear mongers, actors in a political theater, white supremacists, and fringe alt-right that might be speaking tonight. I guess you can put my list, my name, on that list. It's Connie Rattisso, that's spelled R-A-T-I-S-S-E-A-U. I'm a mom of three CCISD graduates and a grandmother of three. No matter the name you label us, what we are is concerned parents that have reached a point that we can no longer, and should no longer, remain silent. We see the direction our great country, our great towns, and our great schools are headed, and we are speaking out, and we are putting some members of this board on notice. We know the board didn't bring in Dr. Williams to institute CRT, or Social Emotional Learning, because it was already here, with Leader and Me and Character Strong programs. We have Dr. Smith, Dr. DuPont, President Cunningham, and all of the alphabet soup organizations to thank for that. Just look at their training agendas to see the indoctrination of our educational system. We understand that critical race theory is banned in CCISD and by the state, but you see, we also know critical race theory isn't a class. It's an ideology. It's a tool in a war chest. It is Marxism, and it is here in our school board meetings that parents say enough is enough.
Next, we have Josh Foxworth, followed by Carrie Larson.
So during the hiring process, Dr. Williams asserted that he did not support CRT or any policy of the same principle under a different name. A Daily Caller article from November 29th of this year clearly shows that on September 18th of 2020, Dr. Williams wrote an email to parents asserting that policies that he was implementing indeed, quote, "do align with the ideology of CRT." This included, quote, "an action plan to combat systemic racism," and other things that he said were necessary to, quote, "move the equality statement," that's the LCPS equality statement, "from word to action." Recent disclosures have revealed that Dr. Williams' time, I'm sorry, during his time at Loudoun County, at least one sexual assault of a high school football player went unreported in the system's Safe Schools Information System. Dr. Williams clearly lied to parents during the hiring process. He misrepresented his views and his previous actions. He allowed school systems to report zero assaults at a school where a child was brutally sexually assaulted. Any single one of these three should be more than enough grounds for Dr. Williams' resignation. For what length of time can a superintendent publicly hold a position of bigotry before it makes him unemployable here at CCISD? If roles were reversed and Dr. Williams' exposed prejudices were against any other racial group, he would be removed without hesitation. I expect the same in the protection of students who look like me. If Dr. Williams maintained a public position of supporting CRT while privately opposing it and sneaking out the back door to CCISD, then he knowingly allowed harm to come to his students so that he could maintain his job and his pay, and he should go. If you want to do something to assuage people like me from coming and calling for his resignation, then I would suggest doing something that actually has merit to it. Instead of when somebody brings an example of CRT to you, simply saying, okay, we won't do that anymore, maybe institute some form of punishment for the teacher, for the principal, or for the administrator that allowed it to happen. Thanks.
Ms. Carrie Larson, followed by Nancy Hough.
My question to you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, is why are we considering anything related to TASB? Are there policy recommendations? The TASB was well aware that the NASB would be seeking to activate the DOJ and FBI against parents who had concerns over what was being taught and mandated for our children. The TASB was perfectly fine with concerned parents like me being labeled, quote, "domestic terrorists," end quote. I am a bonus mom to three teenagers. I work 50-plus hours a week. I battle traffic every day. I come home and cook dinner every night. I hope with homework where I can, because pre-Cal is hard. I make sure my kids' needs are met. I go to sleep, and I repeat the cycle, day after day after day. I'm sure that I speak for most moms and dads here when I say that we are too busy trying to be our children's heroes to be domestic terrorists. So why is this board okay with being associated with this kind of nonsense? I had a situation with an assignment my son was asked to do back in September. I emailed the board, the school administration, and the teacher. Only one board member responded, "Thank you." The Dean of Instruction was supposed to call me, but I never got a response. Out of the 10 people I emailed, I was ignored by nine and a half. That is why parents are frustrated. Your silence on these concerns speak volumes, and it makes it look like you have something to hide. Words matter when they become action. I reached out to a group in Loudoun County, packed. Scott Minio and I became very quick friends. That Daily Caller article, that was me and Scott. It's funny, how many people in the media want to reach out once they find out that a man who left a county burning like a dumpster fire somehow managed to slip out unnoticed, make it halfway across the nation, and is trying to implement the same type of curriculum? The root of the problem, though, existed before you, and I don't blame you. You were brought here for a reason. You were brought here to pollinate the disgusting flower of equity and restorative practices. I'm gonna do my part to keep that flower from blooming. This board and district need to remove themselves from membership in the TASB immediately, and reject any divisive policies and curriculum involving equity. We want equality for all, not equity. And parents, if y'all don't understand the difference between equality and equity, I urge you to please start doing your research. Thank you.
Ms. Nancy Huff and Yin Raabe.
My name is Nancy Huff, and I am a teacher in CCISD. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to allow me to address the board tonight. We are a district of innovation, and our focus is on student success. With that in mind, I would personally like to share some personal examples that I have of seeing Dr. Williams and his interactions with students, parents, and teachers. In May of this year, I sat and watched my grandson graduate from high school. After it was over, my grandson told me that the man standing next to his principal shook his hand and thanked him for his service. Dr. Williams was that person, and he said to him, "Thank you for your service." It touched him enough that that's the first thing, almost the first thing, he told me when we walked outside. He said he doesn't even know me, and yet he thanked me. There's no doubt in my mind that Dr. Williams said the same thing to every graduating senior wearing a military sash. On the Friday before Halloween, Dr. Williams came to our school for a visit. It just happened that we were having our kindergarten character parade, he's already smiling, led by a student dressed as Alexander Hamilton. It was also the first day that we had parents back in the building. Dr. Williams entered the school with a line of parents standing out the door, and my job was to get him through the parent. I didn't do a very good job, because Dr. Williams stopped and visited with those parents as he was coming in the building. He wanted to get to know them. He wanted to welcome them back, and it was fun to watch. On the other hand, I was failing at my job. So as he entered the school, I also observed him with students in the hallway, and I observed him listening, getting down and listening to these students, sharing what they were doing. And before he left, I actually had a scheduled time that I was supposed to meet with Dr. Williams. And while we were visiting, the young Alexander Hamilton came into the room to meet Dr. Williams. The young boy broke out in song, singing "Alexander Hamilton," complete with hand movements and a deep voice. I was tearing up, and Dr. Williams was applauding him and thanking him for a job well done. There's more about that in the notes that I have. I am a member, also, of the DEIC Committee. There, I have seen Dr. Williams reach out and visit with parents at these meetings. Finally, student success cannot occur without our teachers and staff. This has been a trying and stressful time for all of us. What we as staff have observed is a superintendent that listens to us. Once he is made aware of concerns, he acts swiftly. To you, they may seem trivial, for example, wearing jeans, but to staff, it goes a long way for morale. I would like to thank the board for hiring this amazing superintendent, and thank you for your time.
Yin.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Williams, and community members. My name is Yin Raabe, and I'm an educator. I'm here to speak in support of Dr. Williams. And I remember when the school board was going through the process of looking for a new superintendent, and I attended meetings to witness that. And I thought that they did a thorough job in selecting him in a national search. It's important to have someone that is not from within the school district. And so I'm so glad that he came from far to be our new superintendent. I think that we should let Dr. Williams do his job, get to know Dr. Williams, and talk to him, instead of using buzzwords and a theory that has not even taught in CCISD schools. Thank you.
Next, we have Christine Perizzo, followed by David Smith.
In light of recent board decisions, many people in the community have asked me how we can affect change in CCISD. I tell them to speak out, especially at these meetings, support candidates, and consider running themselves. But we need fair, transparent elections in CCISD, and as someone who has experienced these elections firsthand, this district has no idea how to conduct transparent and fair elections. Why do I believe that? Here's some examples from this past election. In February, when a reporter asked candidates about critical race theory, instead of just answering the question, the District 5 incumbent convinced the district's chief communications officer to hassle the reporter. The district is not allowed to intervene on behalf of any candidate. That's called electioneering, and it's illegal, but CCISD did it anyway. It also doesn't know how to manage voting machines. In this year's election, three Hart Intercivic Easelate voting machines did not have the internal paperwork to match their external validation seals. This validation process exists to prove that the votes haven't been tampered with. CCISD isn't supposed to blindly count votes from machines that lack the proper validation, but CCISD did it anyway. And third, for the past seven months, it has refused to release the vote tallies from the voting machine's master control computer. Releasing those records is not only required by state law, but the vice president of this board stated on May 19th that the records would be provided via a Public Information Act request, which I submitted months ago. But instead of releasing those records, the district's general counsel has outright lied, denying the existence of the records. This shouldn't be possible, right? But once again, CCISD did it anyway. So why do these records even matter? Wasn't there a recount? There was, but CCISD doesn't want the public to know. It is simply too easy to manipulate the process and the results. You see, to count the votes on election night and during the recount, CCISD used voting data from each machine. These votes are recorded on little PC memory cards, the same kind that plug right into any laptop at home. cards out of the voting machines, changing the vote totals, and putting them back in. And guess what? The voting results were changed, but without any indication that the memory cards had ever been tampered with. In short, anyone with a bit of know-how and unfettered access to the machines, such as a school district running its own election, could easily conduct this sort of tampering. The results must be validated by master control computer records, which are impossible to tamper with. It is the legal duty and moral obligation of C C I S D to release the master control computer records from the May election and make them available for an independent forensic audit, and it is the responsibility of every member of this board to instruct the superintendent to release these records without further delay. And one final question: If the election really was run cleanly, as this district claims, then why not release the records to prove it? What do you have to lose?
Next, we have David Smith, followed by Christine Garcia.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dr. David Michael Smith, and I'm here to speak my support, to voice my support for the superintendent and the board, and to say something, especially to some folks in the audience, about the importance of confronting institutional racism in our society. Some folks may not be aware of it, but many students in universities, colleges, and secondary schools around the country are learning about both the positive achievements of our country and the uglier side of our history. I personally am glad to see more attention being devoted to white supremacy and how it has harmed people of color, and indeed harmed all of us. I think everyone should learn about how colonization and slavery and segregation and institutionalized racism led to the death and oppression of millions of people of Native and African descent. I think everyone should learn about how white supremacists lynched Mexican-Americans and murdered Chinese immigrants for generations, and all of us should recognize this legacy of subjugation is not over, far from it. Now, critical race theory has a long impressive history in legal education, but it's not taught in K-12 schools, and it's certainly not taught here. Some folks who are criticizing CRT don't appear to know the facts. Other critics acknowledge the grave sins of the past, but erroneously claim that racism has largely been eradicated. That's unfortunate. Denying the persistence of racism today is like denying the reality of climate change or denying the results of last year's presidential election. As the old adage goes, "Everyone has the right to their own opinion, but not their own facts." But most Americans know that racism is still a problem. Eighteen months ago, as many as 26 million people of all backgrounds marched to demand justice for George Floyd. More recently, a Pew Research poll revealed that 80% of the public say there's a lot or some discrimination against Black people, 76% say there's a lot or some discrimination against Hispanic people, and 70% say the same for discrimination against Asian people. It's like Houston, like Clear Creek, we still have a problem here. Education about racial oppression does not entail the proposition that all white people are oppressors or inherently racist. It focuses instead on the institutions and social relations and ideas that sustain white supremacy. What's the point of anti-racist education? To help students of all backgrounds understand how harmful this is, how it harms our society, and how they can work together to help end it. And in this context, character education, which promotes caring and empathy, freedom from prejudice, and fairness as mandated by state law, is vitally important. You know, our country faces some very great threats today, but they don't come from anti-racist education, or demographic change, or growing popular demands for equality. This school district can make a huge contribution by continuing to educate young people about racism and encouraging them to reject it. Thank you.
Kristen Garcia, followed by Bettina Ellison.
Hi, I'm Kristen Garcia. I'm actually a teacher here in C C I S D, and my students gave book talks this last week as their third major grade for the nine weeks, and they did an incredible job. And not only that, not only did they do an incredible job presenting, but as an audience, they did an incredible job. They paid attention to each person, even if they were presenting about a book that they didn't agree with or didn't like. And in a lot of ways, actually, they did a much better job than a lot of the audience members here tonight. So with that said, as a teacher, taxpayer, and a former student in C C I S D, I have a pretty unique perspective to share some concerns. As a parent, part of my parenting philosophy is parenting the child in front of me, and I feel very much the same way in my teaching about teaching the child that's in front of me. Despite what some people would have you believe, the biggest issue in curriculum in C C I S D is not CRT. It's instead the expectation that teachers teach the same curriculum as always to students whose past two years of learning have been completely disrupted. We've handed teachers the responsibility to bridge the gap and do all of the regular learning, too. We've asked them to do this with no support in terms of student behavior. More than ever, students are glued to their cellphones, or at least at the high school level. They literally can't keep them put away, and who can blame them? Look around at the attendees here tonight. The majority of them can't stay focused or motivated to complete a task in class, instead saying that they'll do it at home and returning to social media instead. Parents' support there is virtually nonexistent, even when teachers have time to contact them. Assignments, as you can guess, usually are not completed at home and certainly don't have the support of a teacher in their learning. The students in front of us need to be taught first how to interact in an educational environment all over again. If teachers were indoctrinating students with anything, we wouldn't waste our time on a boogeyman. Instead, we'd be training them to listen in class, put away their cellphones, ask for help, and turn in assignments, and to value the opportunity that they are lucky enough to have in receiving a free, top-notch education. We'd brainwash them into thinking critically and problem-solving so that we don't have to repeat the basics of M L A format every time we turn in a paper. I have foreign exchange students this year who not only take their education more seriously and perform better than my native speakers as a result, but they also struggle to make connections with other students, in part because their peers can't look up from their phones or TikTok or making videos of each other for even a second. Here, we have board members positioning themselves to our other political offices and ignoring both years of educational research and professional opinions and refusing to lead with the students in front of them in mind. We also have a vocal of small group of parents sowing discord and lies at every board meeting, apparently to politicize the education in C C I S D instead of improving it. The real concern about educating the students in front of us disappears when we demonize professional educators and make the superintendent into a straw man. What will the board do to support teachers in getting students back on track in the classroom? What will the board do to retain teachers as they inevitably start to exit the profession due to lack of support and ever-deepening criticism? Next semester, I'll be teaching a unit on media literacy and satire to my seniors.
Ms. Garcia, thank you.
And I wonder if the parents need it more.
Thank you.
I'm kind of going off the cuff a little bit tonight, because I did so much research, and this right here is a compilation of all of that. I will let parents know that CRT in education examines the socio-political consequences of racism in an education setting, and I am citing Landon Billings and Tate of 1995. I think what a lot of us are having trouble grasping is the difference between equality and equity. Equality is treating people the same. It's basically what we want for all of our children. Equity is a social engineering to favor supposedly aggrieved minorities. So whenever I started doing my research on SEL from Castle, it has all kinds of proponents of this exact definition of critical race theory in it. It's all over it. The Leader in Me, the Leader in Me has a navigating unconscious bias in equity in education. That also has really strong undertones of CRT. Parents question why we distrust what's going on with this board and what is going on with the education of our children. I've also reached out to Scott Minio, and I can kind of explain to Jeff Foxworthy why teachers are not being reprimanded properly for teaching CRT in classrooms. Because in October 12th, Mr. Williams backed and amended professional conduct policy that would have punished teachers if they criticized CRT in private or in the workplace. The man that created this proposal was Scott Ziegler. Of course, he's your replacement. I also saw where he partnered with community groups like the NAACP and allowed them to dictate policy that was backed on how they created the now-famous Action Blant to combat systemic racism. I've gone through the minutes of your meetings in Loudoun County, and I've gone through our equity audit that we've had, and you are setting us up to do the exact same thing that was done in Loudoun County. We want our children to be treated equally. Equity has a very different definition in today's time. I believe, as an ex-educator in this district, that we do teach equally. Equity completely destroys what we have in this district.
I'm a father of two C C I S D students, an alumnus of Clear Creek High School in Aggie. I keep seeing a lot of Aggie shirts in here. Former software engineer, cloud architect, I'm currently an IP litigator. I'm also a Black person with biracial heritage. I keep wondering, who here has actually been taught critical race theory? It's unclear to me. Everyone's talking about it. I don't seem to think anyone who's talked about it so far has actually been taught it. I learned critical race theory in law school as an elective class, not even a required class. So the class was Race and the Law. It aimed to take a look at critically how the American legal system is inextricably intertwined with and indelibly marked by the history of slavery and racism in America. These effects are not simply echoes from the past, but they are contemporary issues. In that class, one of the topics was critical race theory. Honestly, I will donate $100 to C C I S D tonight if anyone can tell me who Derrick Bell and Kelly Crenshaw are, who actually oppose CRT. At the risk of oversimplifying an entire field of study, critical race theory is about -- I have $100 in my pocket if you can do it. Critical race theory is about understanding that in a diverse society, different groups of people often have very different experiences within that society and different interactions with the structural entities that govern society. The net effect of that understanding would be a better understanding between various groups that is between each other and an honest assessment of a society's fairness. Now, as I said, I learned CRT in law school, but does that mean the topic is too advanced for children to learn? I don't think so. I think the better question is, if our children are old enough to live the differences that typify the American experience, then why wouldn't they be old enough for us to try to help them understand those differences in experience? Is slavery a difficult topic? Yes. But what's the purpose of discussing Frederick Douglass after stripping him of his historical context? Are we not lying to our children if we whitewash MLK from the context of civil rights, or better yet, tell them that we somehow magically fix racism while they go to school and have to deal with their racist classmates? Yes, some of the students in C C I S D are racist. Shock and awe. Let that sink in. No doubt CRT has become a political lightning rod, but let's be clear: A collective of willfully obtuse and low-key racist have normalized ignorance under the banner of preventing divisiveness or racial blame. An unwillingness to look at our differences is just the laziest tool of ignoring injustice. How can you describe injustice without difference? How can you explain why the largest respects of American history are by erasing race? Plessy v. Ferguson, Plessy was seven-eighths white, seven-eighths. The Supreme Court of the United States thought that was important enough to mention. Race is important.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll have Ms. Paige Rander, followed by Michael Creedon.
I'm here tonight to address both the board and the community, of which I served ten years as a Clear Creek I S D trustee. The Leader in Me program is an evidence-based, comprehensive model that builds leadership life skills in students, creates a high-trust school culture, and lays the foundation for sustained academic achievement. There are over 5,000 Leader in Me schools in 50 states and around the world. It was first introduced in Clear Creek in 2015, and after our own evidence showed that it supported academic improvements, C C I S D worked with the Clear Creek Education Foundation to secure additional funding to bring Leader in Me to more schools. This also involved board approval for district funding. More recently, Houston Methodist Clear Lake made a $1.5 million pledge over five years to expand the program to 13 additional campuses. If you've had the opportunity, as I have, to see Leader in Me in action, you would see students serving as MCs at community events introducing Mattress Mack, students cheering each other for achieving their goals, and an entirely student-led pep rally at Space Center Intermediate. And perhaps my fondest memory, students sharing in a panel discussion with Franklin Covey's education president, Sean Covey, before thousands of Texas school administrators. Dr. Smith returned from that event, beaming ear to ear at how well our youngest learners from Falcon Pass Elementary had picked up and embraced a program that instills goal-setting and leadership and team-building skills, the same skills that come from our extracurricular programs like athletics and band, the difference of which is that there's more focus on academics with Leader in Me. Last time I checked, our neighbors at Houston Methodist Clear Lake and the cities of Chemo, Webster, Clear Lake Shores, Nassau Bay, Seabrook, and our friends in Rotary would agree these lifelong skills are what employers look for in future employees. Leader in Me and Clear Creek I S D is attaining and surpassing the national mission to unleash the greatness in students, educators, and school communities everywhere. I'm pretty sure that people with children enrolled in Clear Creek I S D Leader in Me schools have noticed the positive change in their students' work ethics. Just as I supported Dr. Smith's efforts to bring Leader in Me to Clear Creek I S D, I support Dr. Williams' work with this and many other programs to ensure our students receive a diverse and inclusive education. There are six of us here in this room tonight who effectively hired Dr. Williams. We did this with community feedback on the profile of Clear Creek I S D and what everyone wanted in a future superintendent. It wasn't done in a vacuum, nor was it taken lightly by any of us, and I sit here tonight speaking on behalf of my decision. My only great regret 10 months later is that I wasn't able to stay around long enough to work with Dr. Williams.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Creedon, and I'm presenting today as a parent, but I'm also presenting as someone who's spent the better part of his adult life trying to develop templates and frameworks for large organizations, whether it's in corporate America or in the military, to try to align stakeholders and try to align the public to meet missions and mission statements. Clearly, Clear Creek has all of those components within its websites, within its documents, within its targets. But for the public, sometimes it's very difficult to find those, and they're not always in one place that you can quickly line out where we are and where we're going. The quintessential question, you know, to be answered is, how do I know I'm winning? I don't know if I'm winning if I don't know I don't know if I'm winning, if I don't know where I'm at, or I don't know what we're doing, or I don't know why we're doing it, or I don't know how close we are to getting to those objectives. Strategy, ends, ways, and means. The document, the template I've given in front of you is one attempt, and there are many attempts out there, to try to bring in all of the ends, ways, and means of your strategy to better communicate with the public and better communicate internally to gain alignment. Ends, ways, and means. Ends are those goalposts, those intermediate objectives that let you know where you're going and whether you're succeeding. Retention rates, STAR rates, ACTs, SATs, budget compliance, ways. Those are the tactics and techniques by which all of your departments are driving to achieve your objectives. And what are they? And what are the ones that are important? And where are we at any moment in time? Right-hand side of the template lays out just 18 of them with just a couple comments of where you could be on any given month. That would greatly help the public understand that it's just not one thing you're doing, that it's multiple things you're doing, and you're doing them really well or really poorly, depending on where you are on your roadmap and what those gaps are and how to do better. The bottom right is just a reminder of what our means are. Those are resources. Those are typically fixed. You have a set amount of dollars, you have a set amount of people, you have a set amount of teachers, you have a set amount of facilities. Ends, ways, and means have always been talked about as a three-legged stool. If one of those legs is out of whack, you will never achieve your strategy. Resources and means is typically the one that's set. The final thing that I share on this template is on the left-hand side. It's called a SWOT. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. It's a brutal truth self-assessment of where you are, where you think your strengths are, where you think your threats are, where you think your opportunities are, where you think your weaknesses. They all interplay with each other. If you go back into some of your closed-door sessions, it's not essential that you agree on where you are on them, but it's essential that you talk about them. From there, allies, how you can make your strategies have agreement and improve them. I offer this freely. Thank you for your time.
And next, we have our three one-minute speakers, Patsy Hall, Melissa Daggett, and Lisa Holbrook.
I'm Patsy Hall. I'm a math teacher at Clear Lake High School. And please forgive me, I'm a little nervous, I've never done this before. But I just want to say thank you to Dr. Williams for supporting the teachers. We can tell that you are supporting us in the year that you've been here. And the main thing that I want to say is thank you for opening up the calendar vote again from all the teachers I've talked to. The one that was chosen is not the one that works best for educators, so I thank you for that. And I'm not a divorced parent, but I've heard from divorced parents, and option four works better for them with the whole divorce decree. So, I'm just saying on behalf of some of my friends, if you could go back and take a look at option four in the holiday, the Christmas holiday or the winter holiday, and how that would work with some of the people who have to deal with the kids going to one parent and then the kids going to the other parent. It's not quite equal on some of the other options. That's what they brought up to me. So, thank you so much for your support.
Followed next by Ms. Daggett and Ms. Holbrook.
Good evening, Superintendent Williams and the Clear Lake -- sorry, Clear Creek ISD Board. My name is Melissa Daggett, and I'm a professor of United States history at San Jacinto College. I'm here today to express my gratitude and appreciation for your hard work, professionalism, and leadership of the CCISD Board. As a parent, I appreciate very much the education that you offered my son, Michael, who is a special needs student. This was at Space Center and also Clear Lake High School. As a dual-credit professor of United States history, I have taught numerous classes of Clear Lake High School students. I was amazed at their academic ability and their interest in our country's history. This was definitely one of my highlights in a very long career of teaching United States history. So, once again, I would like to thank you for your hard work, and I wish you well in the new year.
Good evening. I am a parent of two students who graduated from Clear Creek ISD, Clear Lake High School, my daughter in 2007 and my son in 2011. And in addition to being a parent, I've been a taxpayer and a long-term volunteer, and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you, your predecessors who are in this room, as well as the team of eight that sits here tonight. I want to thank you for your work, for the hardest volunteer job there is, for those of you that are school board trustees. And as 2022 comes around the corner, I look forward to seeing all the wonderful results as you work very hard to create an environment that allows all students within Clear Creek ISD to be successful. So, thank you so much.
I wanted to just thank all of our community input speakers tonight. As we saw from having some of our students speak, it's not easy to get up and speak in front of your peers and speak in front of, you know, a room full of people. So, thank you for your feedback. I'll remind you that the board takes all feedback into consideration, and we do discuss that when we go back to closed session and when we are collaborating and working with each other. So, with that, did you want to give your comments?
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity to share a few reflections. First of all, I just want to thank each and every speaker tonight for taking the time to share information with the trustees and with me, and I would like to share some reflections relating to some of the topics that were addressed. First and foremost, both before and after I started in CCISD this past January, CCISD has been focused on providing our students an outstanding education. CCISD has worked and continues to work to maximize individual student growth. That is our focus, and it will remain that way. Our focus is not critical race theory. Critical race theory is not in the CCISD curriculum or in our instructional resources. Our policy, adopted by the board, specifically prohibits district resources from promoting or endorsing race or sex stereotyping or race or sex scapegoating. Some people have made comments regarding my work as superintendent in another district in another state. That district is not CCISD, that state is not Texas, and I ask you, I ask for you to partner with me, to partner with us in order to work together to support the students of our school district. There've also been some comments on notions of equality versus equity, and I'd like to share some reflections on that. As we focus on maximizing individual student growth, we will have high standards for all. We will work to maximize individual student growth and avoid letting average or proficient become the standard. We will provide students with interventions, supports, and extensions as needed, not regardless of need. We will provide support and experiences based on need, not race. I also want to note, switching to a different topic, that a point of pride for many years in CCISD, long before I arrived, has been our focus on core values: trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. And as of August 1st of this year, our state standards, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills that were required to teach, include positive character traits, including CCISD core values like trustworthiness, respect, and responsibility. This emphasis in CCISD has been reflected for many years in many of our schools' implementation of Leader in Me, a program based on Stephen Covey's book, Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. It's also been affected, reflected, I should say, by multiple schools having been named as state schools of character. The program recognizes schools at the state level for encouraging character development in students, which can contribute to positive school environment and academic achievement. Now, definitions of social-emotional learning include references to competencies such as self-management and responsible decision-making, and so social-emotional learning, or SEL, in CCISD has revolved around our core values. Now, I also want to talk very briefly about student safety. Every superintendent has no greater responsibility than to provide a physically safe and emotionally nurturing school environment for all children. I'm committed to acting to protect children swiftly, to communicating transparently, and to building relationships with parents based on trust. I promise you that during my 13 years as superintendent, I've never turned a blind eye, brushed under the rug, or lied about matters of student safety. Never. I share this information because there's been references to my handling of a 2018 incident from my previous district, and I'd like to address this matter briefly. The 2018 incident was promptly investigated and referred to law enforcement. Discipline was administered in accordance with the Education Code in Virginia. Communication was sent to parents in the community about the incident, given what can be lawfully released regarding matters involving minors. This information is important because it reflects the fact that the 2018 incident was not swept under the rug by the district or by me. Finally, I ask that you judge me based on the work that I do here in Clear Creek ISD. If you do, I'm confident that you will see that I'm relentless, that the CCISD team in general is relentless on working to maximize individual student growth and achievement. Thank you for listening attentively and respectfully. I appreciate that. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And I was going to use some board privilege to also, you know, share some remarks that I had prepared for tonight. First of all, I wanted to congratulate Dr. Engel for her years of service, both to the district and to our community. I also wanted to congratulate our robotics teams, who have garnered first places over the past couple weeks, to our band performers and fall athletes that have been recognized with distinction. You see, I've been asked by many people, as I'm out and about in our community, how come we learn about all the good things that our students are doing within the district from you? It's because if you pay attention to the national narrative, public education is not winning. I beg to differ here in CCISD. You see, we're supposed to be promoting CRT, if you listen to the national narrative, which many of us up here on this podium and administration out in the audience have never even heard of until it became the popular buzzword for all things that someone who is not in agreement with lumps together, whether it's programs, books, et cetera. I will remind you that the board is all about student success and providing opportunities to our students in all things school-related. That includes academics, robotics, debate, band, orchestra, theater arts, and the list goes on. The goal of the board and the administration is to provide opportunities and provide success for our students. It's thrilling when our students go off to different parts of the country and thrive. You could say that many of us up here are school people and have a vested interest in the district. That's because we are. We have been doing it for years and will continue to do so. I say all of this to let our constituents know that if you see our administration out and about, feel free to engage us or to set up an appointment where we can discuss any issues or concerns that you have or questions that you have. If asked, you will learn that the district has invested time and engaged our community and our strategic partners in developing our strategic plan, as well as our community-based accountability report. If you are curious or have questions if the superintendent is implementing CRT, look no further than either one of these documents, as these are the things that the seven of us are evaluating our superintendent on. Fact, House Bill 3979 was just passed, and it states, "No teacher, administrator, or other employee in any state agency, school district, campus, open enrollment charter school, or school administration shall be required to engage in training, orientation, or therapy." That presents any form of race or sex stereotyping or blame on the basis of race or sex. And it further states, "No teacher, administrator, or other employee in any state agency, school district, campus, open enrollment charter school, or school administration shall require or make part of, according, the following concepts." The first one was, "One race or sex is inherently superior to another race or sex." Fact, the board adopted language last spring that addressed not introducing controversial topics or curriculum into the district. Fact, all of us here in attendance are within -- the majority of folks within our audience live within CCISD. I can understand that some folks like to focus on the national talking points and buzzwords of the day, but your board will remain focused on student achievement, success, and opportunities for our students here in Clear Creek Independent School District. We are going to remain focused on our strategic plan and the things that are important to our community that are addressed within our community-based accountability report. Fact, social and emotional learning was a focus well before Dr. Williams joined us here in CCISD, and it will remain a focus as it pertains to some of the strategies and content areas of our strategic plan. The Leader in Me program is one of those focus areas as it is based on Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Effective, of Highly Effective People, which I know does not mention CRT. How do I know? I've taken that course both personally and professionally. The Leader in Me program works on student collaboration, problem-solving, goal-setting, and leadership. Emphasis was further put on the program after the tragedy of Santa Fe High School by addressing the hiring of an additional 20-plus counselors that don't deal with schedules, don't deal with proctoring, but they're there to address student needs and provide student success, provide mental health, talk about conflict resolution. Fact, after coming here in February of 2021, Dr. Williams continued to follow the district's plan of offering in-class instruction and did not close our schools, although I heard many people say he was going to do that. I encourage those who are just now taking notice of how the district operates, I welcome you. Your input and feedback are vital to the success of our district. It would be great for you to hopefully engage and learn how the district operates here. I can assure you that the board will continue to push student achievement and success while ensuring that the district remains one of the top areas of employment. I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, or whichever celebration that you and your family celebrates during this time. Please be safe in your travels, and we will see you in the new year. Thank you. And we will move on to -- I'll give everyone who wishes to leave a chance to do so. And now that we're clear, we will move to item 10, action on our consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull any items? I did have one thing that I noticed on page 10. Right before, I think it was eight, community input. If you look at the bottom, let me see, let me make sure I'm in. No, I take that back. It's actually item nine on the consent agenda. It said Vice President Cunningham. I think that was Vice President Sanchez. On the minutes? I'm sorry, on page 10.
November 15th minutes.
Yeah. So I just wanted to highlight that before I ask for a motion. And if no one wants to pull anything, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Cottrell?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you for that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. And the motion carries unanimously. We will move to item B, consider approval of a resolution to change single-member district election boundaries. Welcome back, Mr. McClarty.
Thank you. Thank you. Everything's set up here. So we had our census, as everybody's aware, and all the entities, local entities and state and federal, are setting their new election precincts. And one of the things that we're required to do is to review and revise our single-member districts across Clear Creek ISD. So what I wanted to do was kind of give a little bit of background on what we've been doing and why. The 2020 census shows a large increase in population within the boundaries of Clear Creek ISD. So you can see from the graph on the side that we've had some tremendous growth, 37,000, more than 37,000 growth in our district in the last 10 years. And you can see the change has been most dramatic in District 1 and District 5, and District 2 has some growth as well, and then less growth in District 4 and District 3. If the population grew equally across all of our districts, then we wouldn't have to do anything. We could keep our same election districts as we have them. Unfortunately, the ratio between the highest and the lowest population district is 19.8%. You can see that in the column, center column there, the variance. And under federal and state laws, they require us to equalize as much as possible our population between all of our districts to stay within at least 10% growth or population variance. I just pop this up because this is our current district, just to remind everybody, this is what we look like today, and we need to change these, we need to modify these so that we can bring the population more equalized throughout the district. Wanted to walk a little bit through the process that we followed. District staff utilized redistricting software from our longtime demographic consultant, Templeton Demographics, to draw options for new single-member districts to be reviewed by the board. I was actually here, I've been here 18 years, so I was here the last time we did this and was able to work through this process as well. And as I told you earlier today, I don't plan on being here 10 years from now doing this again, but who knows? The Board of Trustees were provided with five different options showing new single-member district election boundaries. These were provided on November 5th, November 19th, and December 3rd. And the 14th and 15th amendments to the Constitution and the Texas Education Code, as noted here, require the district to revise the boundaries of its single-member trustee districts to make them as nearly as practicable of equal population. If, based on current decennial census data, the total population residing in Clear Creek ISD's most populous single-member district exceeds the total population residing in its least populous single-member district by a deviation of 10% or more, and that's why we're here tonight, because it's 19.8% difference. And all of the five draft plans that were provided to the board are within that 10% variance. The board met on December 6, 2021, in an open workshop to discuss all five draft plans, and the board quickly came to a consensus that Draft Plan E, which closely aligns to our current high school boundaries, was the best plan, and asked staff to post all five plans, along with the board's preferred plan, on the district website, and we did that on December 7. That's our current high school boundary. So I want to emphasize, we're not changing high school boundaries, because I did have somebody come to me after the public hearing saying, "Are we moving students?" I said, "No, this has nothing to do with high school boundaries. The goal is to try to get," and Plan E was to try to get our single-member districts to align as closely as possible to those high school boundaries, not to move any students out of a high school. So I want to make sure I covered that. This is Draft Plan E that was seen as the consensus best plan so far. It aligns with our boundaries fairly well, so I'll just remind you, there's the high school boundaries, and there are the election districts that we are looking at. The next one is really an easier way to look at this. So what this shows in the shaded area is Draft Plan E, I'm calling it Exhibit A because we have a resolution that will have this as Exhibit A to be approved by the board. We've overlaid the high school boundaries, which are the black outlined areas, over our shaded areas, which are the election districts. So they're very close, they're not exact, but I think this is a pretty fair representation of the high school boundaries within the constraints that were set up under. If we move, and I've done this a bunch, trying to move those lines around a little bit to try to make them even closer, it throws them out of balance. We're way above the 10%, the population is hard to do, so this is really the closest approximation I could get to mirroring our high school boundaries. This is the census data that tells you what each one of the districts are located or have, and all we're interested in is that total number at the very far right. So District 1 has 49,911, District 2 has 49,305, District 3 has 49,561. District 4 is a little higher, 51,617, and District 5 is a little lower at 47,331. Of course, District 5 includes the west side of Lake City, which is still growing, still, the population is going to continue to grow, a lot of vacant land out there with a lot of developments planned on the horizon. We work with Lake City, the city of Lake City, I know we have a Realtor here that's an expert on it as well, but there's a lot of growth projected out in that area. So that 9.1% will shrink over time as it builds out. So this is the recommended single-member election district maps that we're bringing to the board tonight for discussion and possibly approval. So the recommendation is, we prepared a board agenda page, which you have in front of you, that the recommendation is to, it's a recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Trustees approved the attached resolution to revise election district boundaries as provided. So there's a resolution attached that we would ask the board to approve, and Exhibit A is the map you see right there. So I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have.
And I'll open it up to the board for any questions. See no questions, I'll...
Can I just say? I just, it's actually not a question about this, but I just wanted to, at the workshop, we actually talked about adding something to our website that is an app that would, anybody that lives in, or anybody can type in an address, and you'd actually get back the district you're in, your voting location, probably a day of and...
Right. That's very easily done, and I think Dustin has already been working on that in the background, so that you could type in wherever you live, and it'll tell you what district you're voting in and where you would vote. That's easily done, and we're going to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I guess just to follow on from that, in addition to having that as a tool for the election, could we also have that available kind of in a prominent place on the website so that anyone can see during the rest of the year, they can type in their address and see which board member and the at-large members represent them?
Yeah.
With contact information?
I think that's easily done. I'm nodding for Dustin, but yeah, I think that's easily done. We're going to do it, Dustin.
You know, I hate to jump in on this, but that just sort of sparked an idea. If we're going to have that information, would it be possible to also add information that does a quick lookup on what elementary, intermediate, and high school zone that address corresponds to?
We currently have something like that on our website.
Yeah.
But I don't know what the technology could do, but we might be able to tie all that together.
I think that's what I'm asking, is can we tie that?
One place, where you can do it all. Okay. We'll certainly look at that. If we can, we will.
So... I'd appreciate that.
So, for example, if someone logs into its learning or registers, you know, their child, I think that's where you're probably going, maybe? I don't know if the software has that, but...
Well, we'll look into it. If it's something we can't do, we'll let you know.
We're adding more features to your app.
Yes, we're, we're going to have a mobile app before this is over with, aren't we?
We're just trying to make it easier for everybody.
I agree. I mean, the best we can do is to let our taxpayers know where they can vote and how, who represents them.
We certainly support finding efficiencies for our community and taxpayers to, whether to find what school their children are attending or finding their voting increasing.
And then we can sell the app, market it and sell it.
There you go.
They can do a mobile app. I've seen them do it before.
Like the way you think. Well, Mr. McClarty, I just want to say thank you for, you know, doing a lot of the heavy lifting. I know, you know, it was some juggling to put together all of the different maps and look at things and kind of keep within that 10%, you know, ratio, and then account for the growth. So thank you for all the work that went into that. I know it was punching in numbers, but it still, you know, takes a time, and then we had some requests, I think, that we threw on top of that. So thank you for accommodating that, and if there's no more comment, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. President, in recognition of the fact that I'm an at-large member, and so I have no stake in the outcome of this at all, I move that we adopt the map as presented.
And I appreciate that. Mr. Bowen, do I have a second?
As the other at-large, may I?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cottrell. Seeing no further comment or questions, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand, and motion carries unanimously. And we will move on to item C. It's been brought to my attention that since our last, since we last, I guess, broached the subject on this and we decided to, you know, postpone, I've heard that one of the candidates was actually given a voting position on GCAD. And then I guess we can present a completely different motion now that other, you know, entities have voted. So I guess with that being said, and since we've discussed this, I'll go ahead and make a motion to offer, I'll move that we allocate 372 votes to Chad Tressler and 371 votes to Scott Brass. And I think that takes care of our 743. Mr. Sanchez? So I have, I made the motion, and I have a second from Mr. Sanchez. I'll open it up for comment.
Oh, that was my, I'm sorry, I thought I had to wait for a second. So you say someone's already been appointed or received enough votes?
Yes, I've heard that they made Ms. Johnson's position a voting position.
Okay.
And I heard that was voted on and approved by the GCAD board.
Now, I know that we got a resume from Scott Brass. I didn't see anything coming in from Chad Tressler as far as, you know, what they can, what his, how he represents us well on the CAD board. So I can't speak for him. As far as Cheryl Johnson being given voting rights, I would assume that that CAD board can take away those rights from her if they choose?
Not sure.
Not sure?
I mean, I'm not sure.
Right.
Because GCAD is not my...
Mr. President, maybe it would help if you just went into a little more detail of what you heard and where you heard it, that kind of thing. I guess we're just kind of dealing with the uncertainty here because I think there are some people on the board who are weighing in their mind whether or not to amend the proposition to give some of our vote to Ms. Johnson or not.
Okay. I believe that's in the minutes. From what I understand, there was a special meeting of the GCAD board to go ahead and make Ms. Johnson, who was an ex-officio member, I believe? And they went ahead and gave her, you know, the voting privileges.
And, Mr. President, I guess I'm at a little disadvantage because I don't believe, last time I looked, I couldn't find their meeting minutes online, the way the various school boards and city councils and stuff keep theirs online. So I guess I'm just, I would just have to assume that if I'm going to base any voting proposal on that, that we just accept that on face value. I'm not sure. I guess I'm just, well, let me ask this, have you seen the minutes or was that received through some third party?
That was received through third party.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Hold on just a second, because I believe...
I'm Tommy Watson, I'm the chief appraiser of the district, and yes, on November 22nd, we had a special meeting to make Ms. Johnson a voting member. I don't even know that you can revoke it. I mean, look into it, but I just know it's section 411, or that what it is, or we vote it's a micro vote.
So you didn't need any special authorization to make her a voting member, therefore you feel like you cannot revoke her opportunity to be a voting member? So it's not written one way or another? It's not written one way or another?
Mr. Bowen? Sure. So I think it says volumes that we're all kind of stumbling around in the dark on this, and we have been for the past month. I mean, this is the appraisal board that sets the values of all of the properties in Yalveston County, and there's an equivalent one in Harris County that we haven't voted on, and I'm not sure why that hasn't occurred, but we'll cross that bridge when it comes up, I suppose. But this has extremely important implications for the district. If these valuations... But this has extremely important implications for the district. If these valuations are not correct, the, the comptroller's office for the state has their own valuation process. And if, if their valuations disagree with our CAD board's valuations, then we can be penalized for, for taking too much in state funding, using our valuations, or not collecting enough taxes. So, there are serious consequences for getting this right, and we need to be very invested in the process. And so, I've, over the course of this, I've spoken to Mr. Tressler, I've spoken to Ms. Johnson, spoken to Don Gartman, who is the current head of the board, and I've kind of followed as these votes have come in. As I understand it, Ms. Johnson was made a voting member of the board, so her position was made a voting member of the board. So, now there are essentially six voting members, the five that we elect in this process plus her. I believe it can be revoked, but in order for it to be revoked, it would have to pass a vote that she can now vote on. So, that, that would be an extreme action, I would think. I'm not concerned about that happening. But I, I think going forward, and this is something I've spoken to some of these candidates about, I, I would like updates from the CAD board about the decisions they're making, the lawsuits they're involved in, because that's a reality of the job, and the contracts they enter into. I know there has been some concern about, about entering into a contract for the chief appraiser position and how long that lasts and what the terms of it are. And so, I think it's, it's something we need to follow. So, going forward, I would like us to, just like we try and keep our constituents informed about what we do on this board, and that's part of our job. It's not a job that we outsource to anybody. It's, it's our job to do ourselves. At the same time, we're the constituents of the CAD board. And so, so my hope is that we've kind of all learned from this experience, and we pay careful attention to what the CAD board is doing and, and pay attention to the updates they give us. And, and I trust the individuals involved. I think they're stand-up people. I know a lot of them personally, as I think many of us do. What I would like to do, and I guess I can propose this as an amendment, is I would like, and some of the other entities have done this also, it looks like League City and Tiki Island both did it, and I believe Galveston County did it earlier this morning, is allocate one vote to every candidate. And what that would do is that would preserve our ability to recall them later. So, my understanding of the law, and I've only had it explained to me, is that anyone, if we ever wanted to initiate a recall process against a member of the CAD board, we can only do that for someone we cast a vote for. So, so the way we currently have the votes allocated, we would only be able to do that for Mr. Tressler and Mr. Brass. So, what I would like to do is I move to amend Mr. Cunningham's proposal to reallocate two votes from each of them. Actually, I'm making sure I'm getting the math right on that. It looks like we would not be able to recall Cheryl Johnson regardless. So, it would be two votes from each of them and then reallocate one vote to Matt Doyle, Thomas Farmer, Don Gartman, and John Harris. So, that would leave us at 370 for Tressler, 369 for Brass, and then one for each of the others.
Scott, I have a quick question. You said we would not be able to recall Cheryl Johnson?
Well, I, because she is not on the board because we elected her there.
But if we gave her, oh, that's, if we gave her.
So, yeah, she, she's there by virtue of her position.
Yeah.
So.
So, that's a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay.
That's live.
So, do we have a second for Mr. Bowen's motion?
A second.
I would like to, well, he can speak to the motion, but I would like to speak to it as well. I'm a very math-oriented guy, and I took the 5,000 votes. And early this morning, I would like to express my thanks for, to Ms. Stephanie Barker for sending out and being very responsive and getting us the vote totals from the other voting entities in the county. A minimum of 834 votes will, is enough to guarantee that anybody is elected. Some entities in some have exceeded that total, which means if two, two individuals are effectively elected and cannot be, there's nothing we could, anybody who has not yet voted can do to alter that. Two, besides Ms. Johnson, two individuals are already on the board. With, since they exceeded that number of votes, we are in a position where we can guarantee that somebody be placed on the board. And we need 501 votes from this organization to guarantee that any one person be placed on the board. So, I'd, as we debate this, I'd like us to keep that in mind, and perhaps we might consider an amendment to that amendment to shift one of those two totals up to 501. The other total would be 242 less whatever we, whatever single votes we give to anybody else.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the top, the top five vote-getters, so to be elected, yes, you do need 840.
Eight thirty-four.
Eight thirty-four. But the rest are the top vote-getters, I believe. And I think it would behoove us to take, to support the two candidates that are within, you know, CCISD, within League City, because that comprises a big portion of our district. And as mentioned before, we've talked about it, those individuals have, you know, supported our district. And I, I think, just in my experience, that they've done a good job. So.
I'm not really, I don't have an issue with either candidate, and in fact, I'm a very strong supporter of one of the two. However, I'm pointing out that the way the vote totals fall out, we can guarantee that one or the other is elected. We cannot guarantee both of them are elected. And essentially, if we don't guarantee that one is elected, then we're at the mercy of the other entities that haven't voted yet, is that they could pick one of the two and then substitute someone else. In other words, they would control which of the two got elected.
Can I speak to this from my background too? I do want to
Sure.
just say that I do not consider myself, speaking for myself, that I'm scrambling around trying to figure out what to do. From the last time, the last meeting where we discussed this, I said that I'm voting based on the information I have and the experience I have from the time that I've been on the board and the votes that I've made and the, the people that we have given votes to in the past because they have demonstrated their support of the district and public education in the votes that they make and the things that they do on the board. So, and I do want to make the point that their, their meetings are open meetings, just like ours are, and we can actually attend their meetings, which I think they're now on a Wednesday, so they're not, they used to be on the same day as a board meeting, and now they're not. So, we can actually go to them or get information, because I agree that the minutes are not on the, the, I tried to access them too, and they're not usually accessible on the website as other entities are. So, I did want to make those points, and I guess I stand in my position of, I think these are the two people. I understand what you're saying about possibly guaranteeing somebody, but I also see value in allowing both, given the way that the vote tallies happen, that splitting up votes between those two, I think we can do a pretty good job of probably both of them being up there and getting on, so.
And I, I believe, I think if I'm correct, I think majority of the entities have voted. I think we're one of the last ones to vote. So, I don't know if we were able to gather the, the other vote totals, because I think, I think some of those meetings might have happened this afternoon possibly, but I think we're the last entity to vote.
The, the big one would be Galveston County, because that's, I think, some 900 votes, is it?
Thousand six.
Thousand six, yeah. It's up there.
That's right.
Yeah, if you could tell me how they voted, then I could tell you exactly how this lays out.
But you can't, so.
Yeah, I can't.
I can, I can tell you how it lays out without their vote being, being in, but with their vote in, that would make a difference.
I'd like to say, the reason that I brought up the questions at the workshop about this, why do we always give our votes to Scott Brass and Chad Tressler? And the generic answer was because they've represented us well. And I, nobody's provided any examples of that. But what I did learn through my investigation is that during the last two years of Chad Tressler and Scott Brass's term on the board, that the CAD budgets have increased 14% with 7 million of it in just legal expenses, with hardly any wins in courts for the CAD property owners that go and protest their values. So, the budget's gone way up with $7 million used to go to court to defend how they determine the values of these properties with, with very few wins. They lose. Also, I thought this, and this is pretty significant, that I mentioned this at the last workshop, an audit found over $3 million of unencumbered reserves at the Galveston County CAD, and nobody seems to know where it came from. That's $3 million. Those $3 million should be going back to the entities. CCISD is one of those entities that should get their share of that $3 million back. So, that's why my concern about, well, they're doing a good job for us. I don't, with, these are pretty serious issues that I feel should be looked at and not just arbitrarily, well, we've always given them the votes, let's keep on giving them the votes. I don't, I don't know that, I don't have time to go to all their meetings, just like most citizens, parents of CCISD don't have time to come here. But based on the information that I looked for and found, I felt like this needs to be more of a process than just, oh, yeah, we always give them this many votes and we always give them this many votes. So, I take serious issue with that.
I appreciate that comment. I'll open it up to anyone else.
Yeah. Maybe one other comment I'd like to make, and then I think we do need to vote on the motion I made. Just as individuals on this board, how many of these candidates actually, and just think to yourself about it, you don't have to say anything. But, I mean, one, one thing I always think about when I go and vote, and I don't know who the candidates are or I don't know much about them, one thing I think is who actually asked me for my vote? In any way. I mean, did they send me anything? Did they, did someone knock on my door? Did I get a phone call? Did they ask me for my vote? And if they didn't, then I've got no reason to vote for them. And so, there are a couple of candidates who have asked for our votes. Scott Brass did ask for our vote. He, he sent us some information today, and, and I assume he's done that in the past, although I've, I must, I think I got on the board after that would have occurred. But, and then Ms. Johnson asked for our votes at the last meeting, and then in the intervening time, she, she was appointed to the board, and so that became null and void. But I, I think let's go ahead, clearly, this is something we need to keep a closer eye on. I'd like to go ahead and have a vote on my motion, and then, and then we can, I guess, discuss if we want to. We still have the opportunity to further adjust the allocations if we want to.
Thank you for that comment, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Cottrell, did you have anything?
Yeah, let me just add this perspective on it, because obviously, as you were speaking, that's very concerning. And I'm looking at the sitting directors, Farmer, Gartman, Clausen, Tressler, and Brass. So, you know, if there's a problem within and who we're voting for, then you've got a lot of these people that are already there and have been there for a while. So, I think that's something that, from oversight going forward, we need to keep that in mind. And then the other thing, since our last meeting, the, the consideration of our duties, our duties to our constituents, our duties to our taxpayers, we represent them based on CCISD boundaries. And if we're going to offer our support to anybody to represent CCISD, then who better than people who live within those boundaries of CCISD? It does concern me for us to throw votes to people that don't have an interest in our community as a taxpayer of CCISD. So, with that said, I know that there is an individual that she's been, been named and mentioned, Ms. Johnson. She's not a resident of CCISD and lives in Princewood, who used to live here, and, and votes going to somebody outside of CCISD. I don't know that, that they're going to convey the message for our district as well as people that, I don't think people who live outside of our district are going to fight for us like people who do live within. So, with that.
Could I, could I respond to that?
Sure.
Okay, so her, the letter that we got from her at the, the last workshop meeting said she was re-elected to CCISD in '94 and again in '97. She served as a trustee, as a secretary, as a president.
As a resident.
Served on the CCEF, represented CCISD on the GCAD board for three years. So, she's got a long history of representing CCISD.
She used to live in CCISD.
Correct. Now, more so than that, let me point out that it's been since 2008 that I have known that every year she provides numerous classes to all of Galveston County taxpayers on how to research, investigate, and protest their property valuations. So, while she doesn't live in CCISD, I believe she's proven that she supports every Galveston County taxpayer, which includes the entirety of CCISD in Galveston County. Thank you.
Well, I'll, I think we've all had a chance to, you know, interject. So, I'll, I'll move the previous question, which is Mr. Bowen's motion. So, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
I'm sorry, can you please repeat the motion so that we know?
Ms. Barker?
I can. So, the original motion was President Cunningham moved to allocate 372 votes to Mr. Chad Tressler and allocate 371 votes to Mr. Brass. Vice President Sanchez seconded that. Trustee Bowen moved to amend the motion to revoke two votes, one from Mr. Tressler and one from Mr. Brass, and reallocate the votes. It's 370 votes for Mr. Tressler, 369 votes for Mr. Brass, and one vote each for Mr. Matt Doyle, Mr. Thomas Farmer, Mr. Don Gartman, and Mr. John Harris. Trustee Davis seconded that motion.
You got it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, with that being said, I will call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand.
And this is the vote on Mr. Bowen's?
Amendment.
A motion to amend.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. And it looks like that vote is six. I'll, I'll give Mr. Sanchez the opportunity. Do you oppose?
Yes.
Okay. So, that vote, that motion carries six to one.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sanchez, you opposed or?
He, he opposed.
Opposed.
He opposed. And we will move on to.
So, the motion's on the floor, and so it would still require a motion on the, a vote on the, on that motion, correct?
Right, yeah. Currently, the, the main motion is now amended, and that is what we're in debate for.
So, if there's not any other discussion, then you could take a vote on that.
On my original one?
No, no, on Mr. Bowen's. So, Mr. Bowen's motion amended the main motion, and so now the board, if there's not any other discussion, then you could take a vote on that. So Mr. Bowen's motion amended the main motion, and so now the board, if there's not further discussion on it, could vote on Mr. Bowen's. The, the motion has amended.
I did not call for a vote.
Oh, I thought that's what we were just voting on, was Mr. Bowen's amendment.
No, we just, we just did.
We just did.
That motion, that, that motion successfully amended the motion on the floor, but there's not yet been a vote of motion on the floor.
Okay.
Right, so it would be Mr. Cunningham's motion as amended.
Right. So I'll, I'll call for a vote on my original motion that's been amended. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? So the motion carries six, one. Sorry for the confusion, but thanks for hanging in there with me. And we will move on to item 11, the 2022-2023 school year academic calendar.
Good evening. It's nice to see everyone today.
Thank you, Dr.
Daniel assures me my clicker is going to work this time, so.
We got batteries.
Yeah. I wanted to share a little bit about where we are with the calendar process and then some data that we've collected thus far and as well as next steps. So, ah, it's working. A little bit about the subcommittee process in our DEIC. Each year, we have a subcommittee that comes together, formed from members of the DEIC, and have a chance to develop some draft calendars with that group. And that group always includes teachers from every level, as well as a couple of parent representatives. We look at lots of requirements, and these are just a few of the requirements we look at. But obviously, we create calendars that are 187 days. I won't read all of these to you, but we include lots of different things in our calendar and consider lots of other things, like our federal holidays and aligning with local holidays and things like that. Another important piece that we want to make sure we align with is San Jacinto College's schedule, especially for spring break, in particular for our students at checks, as well as dual credit and COM. And so we have some joint conversations with San Jac and COM. Our calendar process this year, our DEIC subcommittee met a couple of times in October after our first DEIC meeting, when they were able to sign up for subcommittees. And then there was the regional San Jacinto College meeting, actually late September, when I attended that meeting to get information about their plans for next year's calendar. So our process typically, typically, in past years, our DEIC subcommittee has narrowed down, usually creates between five and seven different drafts. This year, we actually started with seven. And, and then narrows down to three based on feedback between our meetings, so sort of informal feedback. And then comes to our DEIC committee with three calendars that we share with DEIC for, for approval from them to move out for staff and community voting. Well, this year, we had a little bit of a tough time because we had lots of good calendars. The committee was pretty great in thinking of different ways to meet different groups of people's needs. And so we had four final calendars that we brought to DEIC in early November with the charge for them to essentially narrow it down to three. So typically, we go to the community with two or three calendars. This year, we had four when we came to DEIC, and DEIC was able to vote, the bigger DEIC group, vote to essentially do away with one of those, so we would have three that would go out to the community. And so that's what happened November 2nd. So on the, on the 3rd, right after that, we put the calendars online. Staff and community parents were able to express preference, which one they, which one they appreciated and liked the most. And that was done throughout, really, the rest of November, over the course of the holiday Thanksgiving break as well. And in addition to individual votes of staff and community members, we also have a CIIC vote. So each member of our DEIC, our district council, actually represents a campus, all of the staff. And so they are charged with going back and meeting with their CIIC, their Campus Instructional Improvement Committee, to have a conversation and choose one calendar that sort of represents their campus. And so a little bit about the data we'll look at in just a second. But the, the conclusion of that was individual preferences was right at the end of the Thanksgiving holiday. And then December 8th was the DEIC meeting where we reviewed all the data. We looked at the, at the different groups and how they voted. And, and then we made a decision to make a recommendation to Dr. Williams. So these are the three calendar drafts, which I know are tiny on this slide, but you have a copy of them in the blue folder on your desk, as well as the summary chart. And so a little bit about the, the three drafts that you have in front of you there. We had lots of feedback about wanting to start the beginning of school, not on a Monday. And, and so we were able to do that in draft one and two, not in draft three. So draft three actually has the first day of school being a Tuesday. But if you are a transition grade, you see that PT. That indicates that some classes will be in school that day. And then we had some professional learning days that were floating. So draft one has it early in the year, because we've gotten feedback that teachers appreciate that six weeks in or so, so they can take some time to make some planning, do some planning. Draft two actually has it before school starts. And then draft three had it in a spring, in the spring, in, in February. We had consistent professional learning days across all calendars that you see there. And then the biggest, the biggest challenge and, and topic of conversation for the calendars this year has been around when our winter break will begin. And so draft one has winter break midweek, Wednesday. And then you see draft two is a late start to the winter break, which is December 23rd, Friday. And then we had a Thursday. The draft four that the DEIC had originally voted to eliminate actually had the release for the winter break on the Friday, not the 23rd, but the 16th, so an entire week earlier. And then, of course, when you leave is sort of when you come back, is, is, those are sort of in line. So you see those there. And then a PL day right at the beginning of that. And then obviously, students return the next day. Spring breaks are consistent, can say align with San Jacinto. Last days are consistent. And then you see the number of days for first semester and second semester. So there was quite a bit of conversation about that, trying to be as even as possible on that, especially for, for teachers and students who are in one semester courses. So here are our results. So you can see that for the CIIC results, and that's the one vote essentially, and it's weighted based on enrollment, one vote per campus, weighted based on enrollment. You can see that draft two was the most popular with 56% of the votes, and then fairly even with one and three. And then our individual employee calendar results were 40% preferred calendar one, and then 37% favored calendar two, with a total of about over 1,500 votes. And then our individual community, which includes parents and community, 42% preferred draft one. And then you can see the, the draft two and three weren't quite as popular. The total, total people who participated in that were over 4,000, community members. So interestingly, typically, we have a consistent pattern, right? We see that our CIIC votes the same way the individuals might vote, but, but not, not this year. So you can see too, often we wonder, are these in line, are numbers in line with previous years as far as how many people are participating in this? And you can see our total votes over the last several years. And, and they shot up quite a bit in, in 2019. We did a lot of social media work to, to get some more participation. Interestingly, too, in past years, there's been more of an even split between staff and community. And this year, staff, we had about 1,500, and then community, we had over 4,000. So that was an interesting piece of data. I don't know exactly what it means, but interesting to know. It's much more split, usually about 25,000 to 3,000 each. So other things that we consider when we are thinking about a calendar for next year is obviously timing of construction projects in the summertime, what the testing schedule looks like for, for the, for the springtime, and how we're intending to use our professional learning time, as well as other, other calendars in, in our area. And people surrounding us, what are they thinking? So based on conversations at DEIC on last week, the 8th, the committee decided to recommend calendar one to Dr. Williams. So that, you may remember, was not the CIIC choice, but it was the preference for individual staff and community. We had a lot of conversation about it, and then we made the recommendation to Dr. Williams for calendar draft one. Now, since then, we have had some feedback and have been responsive so to that feedback and have resurrected draft four from our DEIC original subcommittee group. And this draft is similar to the others in the start and, and end times, obviously, as well as having all those same consistent PL days and, and holidays. The difference being, the biggest difference being that it includes that winter break that would, that would start on, at the end of the day, on December 16th, so the Friday. And there's been a lot of conversations about the weekends included within the winter break. And, and the only way really to capture three weekends is to end on a Friday. And so it's tricky on the years when Christmas falls on a weekend. Do we start just that weekend, the whole week, the whole week before? Those kind of conversations we've had. The, so that's a, definitely a perk of that calendar, is to loop in that third weekend. The, one of the drawbacks is that it does have the largest variance in days between the first and the second semester. You see that at the bottom, 80 and 95. I believe your summary document you have includes draft four on the same grid, so you can see it all, all together there. So we, our next steps at this point is, we're hoping to have some conversation tonight. If, if we have questions or input, we have asked for community and staff to again express preference for, for one of the four calendar options now. That opened the 10th, which was last Friday. And, and we'll run through, and that will be open for people to express preference until the end of the winter holiday this year, which is January 4th. And then we are hoping to review data and preferences and bring a recommendation to the next meeting, which is the 24th of January next year. And that's all I have. So do you have questions?
Well, thank you, Dr. Silva. I'll open it up for questions.
I, I do have one question. I'm a little confused by the CIIC calendar results chart. And I, I'm, I just really don't understand the percentages there. Something just doesn't seem to add up correctly.
Okay. Let me look at my data and then I'll make sure I have it.
The, and, and Dr. Silva, while there, there are some errors in terms of the numbers, the, this does show that draft one, excuse me, draft two was most popular with the CIIC. So the, that is, that's accurate, even though the, the percentage here can't be, can't be accurate. But the, the basic, and we can get you the, the correct numbers. But the basic premise that is, is accurate, that the second draft was the one that was most.
Yes, and it was 56%, I believe, but obviously, those other two are not correct.
Okay.
And we'll get you, we'll get you some updated.
I have it in my email.
We will provide the board with the survey results from the new round of preferences, but we'll also provide this as background information with the corrected percentages.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Bowen?
I'm, I'm not, I'm a math girl. But I, clearly not on this, but.
It just seemed really obvious that 94% liked draft two or draft three.
It's amazing I could even make a pie like that, right?
Right.
I don't know how that happened.
So the, the question I had, especially as we revisit this process, I, I guess what I'm worried about is we get back results and some of the, people have strong preferences and weak preferences, and it ends, and we end up with, some of the people who preferred draft one end up moving to draft four, because what they were really after was a calendar that had an earlier end date and an earlier start, for the fall semester and an earlier start date for the spring semester. But not all of them move, and so that vote ends up splitting. And then draft two or draft three ends up ahead and gets a plurality. And then what, what we end up with is because, even though a majority wanted an earlier calendar, because of the way they have it split up, we end up with a majority or a plurality in favor of a later one on the revote. So instead of putting all four calendar options out there for a second vote, why don't we just put options one and four out there? Because we already know, and, and this is a political science concept that's getting a little too into the weeds, but when it comes to strategic voting. But we already know that when you, when you present options one, two, and three to people, the preference is option one. And, and that's why, that's why that was the recommendation originally. So if you put option four in there, really, the only question we're interested in is whether people prefer option four to option one. It doesn't matter if they prefer option, option four to option two, because we already know that option one is preferred to option two. So that's the only question that really matters, since option one has already been favored among the three. And I feel like it might just add confusion to put all four of them out there.
And we had a little.
I'll, I'll.
Yes.
So the, you bring up some interesting points in terms of the number, number of options. And we have already gone out to folks and shared the four. So the cat's out of the bag, so to speak, in terms of soliciting feedback on the four, on the four options. And so basically, the process is, the, the process has followed what's happened previously in terms of that DEIC has developed, developed options, beat up the various options in terms of pros and cons, made a recommendation. And then as superintendent, in order to inform the decision that I make, because the next step is I make a recommendation to the board, I've decided to seek input on these fourth options to inform my decision. And then I'll bring that to the board, and then the board can make the decision that the, the board, board wishes to make. And so I think you bring up interesting points in terms of like the number of options and the order and things, things, things like that. And so I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with those, but I did want to share that we, we have already solicited, solicited that additional input. And a key reason really for doing it is recognizing that the fourth option is, is most similar to the option that has existed in previous years over the last, the last decade. So made the decision to go ahead and bring it out for, for input. Whether or not it could have been a better, better process perhaps, but we are where we are and we'll bring a recommendation to the board.
So when we do this in the future, there's a process that we can use that I think would satisfy that concern, and it's. satisfy that concern, and it's called ranked choice voting. So instead of just asking people to pick the one they like best, what we should ask is rank the four options in your order of preference. And that way, we can see holistically, first of all, if there are a couple that are more popular than the others, and then if you really want to go into the weeds, and there are some disadvantages to doing this, too, you can even eliminate them one by one until you find a consensus winner.
And we'll definitely take a look at process and options. And I'm appreciative of the role, the work that DEIC has done, and I also want to make sure we're clear on respective roles and things. And so I'm smiling as you describe that, having read articles about New York City mayoral contest using a similar approach. But yes, we can, we'll debrief after this and heading into next year in terms of seeing what makes sense in terms of process.
Thanks.
Can I just make one other comment, too? One of the things that I heard you say was that, basically, interpretation of what you said is that the employee vote count and the individual voting was, I would assume, about a thousand votes less than it has been in the past. If that vote was about five thousand and split evenly, there were about a thousand fewer employees. So my suggestion, instead of changing the processes you talked about, which would also be interesting in the future, is that people vote and take the opportunity to actually get on the survey and vote. And I would assume that that refers to everybody, whether it be community members or teachers and staff. It's important that you make your voice heard, and the opportunity is there through a survey, and so people need to take advantage of it. And I do also want to note, I think you had it as a point on the slide, but that difference in draft four of the number of days in the semester, I think is significant, and just that that's a two-week difference between the second semester versus the first semester. Three-week difference.
Well, when you think about a five-day week.
I actually do have a question about that, as applied to high, as applied to high school students. Does that mean there, does the nine weeks actually go past the Christmas break into the next year?
No.
Okay, so it ends.
Semester, the first semester ends at the winter break.
Okay. So their final exams will be before the break?
Correct.
And a lot of high school students are exempt from their second semester exams, right?
Correct. Well, some. Mm-hmm.
So for those students, they would actually have fewer days on their second semester, and so it would equal out. And those are the ones who are going to be most impacted by that difference in the amount of time dedicated to each semester because of the great implications.
Right. That's true. The big concern really isn't for the full-year courses, it's for the semester courses. So if you take the semester and the one semester course in the fall, it's essentially three weeks shorter with instruction in that, on this calendar, because there is such a variance.
Yeah. I guess just where my brain is going on that is, in the spring semester, there are a lot of mandatory activities that take time.
Yeah.
Exemptions from exams, STAR testing, AP tests, that's when a lot of trips happen. And so, having more days in the spring semester may seem like an imbalance, but maybe that actually has a beneficial effect, because it kind of evens out the amount of real time that's spent in each one. In the fall, that kind of thing doesn't happen nearly as much. And so eighty days really does mean eighty days. But in the spring, ninety-five days might not really mean ninety-five days.
Sure. And there always is an imbalance. Our spring is always longer. It's just what's, where is the line where we're going to draw and say that's okay or not okay?
The other side of that, though, is where do we take weather days on these schedules? Are they at the, if we need them, are they at the very end of the year?
The weather days are consistent, and, let me see, their bad weather days are listed on each calendar as October tenth and February twentieth, so one in each semester.
Okay. So even if we lost a day in the fall, we could make it up on the tenth?
Mm-hmm. And if it's after October tenth, obviously, we wouldn't make it in February.
Okay. Dr. Dupont, were you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any more question or comment? Dr. Silva, I just wanted to take the time to thank you for including within the packet of information, the additional considerations, I think, as I've talked with teachers, constituents, neighbors, you know, at sporting events, talk to folks. They've come up to me and said, hey, I happened to take a look at the calendar, and I noticed this. And I think I made the comment that, I think folks think that we sit in a room and just do rock, paper, scissors, and come up with, you know, the calendar, but.
That'd be so much simpler.
There's a lot of things, well, there's a lot of things that go into the consideration of the calendar.
Absolutely.
Such as even a little of the coordination amongst districts, for example.
Absolutely.
Because we have, we have, you know, some of our constituents live here, but they may teach in Pearland, or they may teach, you know, in a neighboring district. And so being cognizant of that, that's a lot of moving pieces. And I can appreciate the work, you know, that's gone into taking a look at those. So, thanks for including that information, and I hope that that's available, you know, to the public as well, so they know what goes into making those decisions. But I guess without any further, further comment, I will adjourn us at nine-thirty on the dot.